Okay. Jeff Slowey, six thirty. And who am I to argue with Mr. Jeff Slowey? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ray Reely, and I am a former PAC chair and a longtime member of the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce. And welcome to our 2018 Citrus Heights City Council Candidate Forum. Before we begin, I really want to thank the city of Citrus Heights for opening the room to us. I very much appreciate the opportunity to be here. Two years ago, we couldn't be here because the building had just barely opened. But now we're here. It's a wonderful room. And I want to especially thank Amy Van, who helped set up. She came yesterday and showed me what I needed to do. And Catherine Cooley helped at the same time. I'd also like to thank Christian Riggs for arranging the broadcast for cable channel fourteen. This is the Chamber's first videoed forum, and we've been doing them for quite a number of years. We also have Ken Benedict, who is in back, and he's doing a livestream for YouTube and Facebook, which is something also a first time for us. Our executive director, Sandrine Demattey, is in the back, the Chamber Executive Director. Janice Downs, who is our PAC chair and former president from Republic Services, and Danny Vera from Dignity Health are all here supporting this event. This is a forum where each candidate will be asked the same questions and have the same amount of time to answer. Since it's not a debate, I ask that our candidates not refute or rebut how their opponents answer their questions. Our timekeeper tonight is Charlie Miller, a longtime friend of mine and a member of Sunrise Center Toastmasters. The timing will range between sixty seconds and two minutes. When the timing starts, the green light will be on, the candidates can all see that. Fifteen seconds before their time is up, a yellow light will come on. And then, when the time is up, the red light will come on, and it'll make a very obnoxious sound, which we will not turn off, because this is one of the few chances we're going to get to shut politicians up. And I'm going to enjoy that as much as I can. Appreciate you all being here. It's great to see you out this evening. And with that, we are going to start with our opening comments. If I do it right, we will have the questions on the PowerPoint, which means I'll only read them once, and then the candidates can see them, and you and the audience will know what they're answering every time. For our first question, we'd like you to please introduce yourself to the audience and tell us why you are the best candidate for one of these three city council seats. What skills and talents do you offer the city of Citrus Heights as a councilperson? And just one other aside, I did a blind draw for the seating, and the questions will rotate from candidate to candidate. With that, Tristan, you're up.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everybody. My name is Tristan Scholl, and I'm running for Citrus Heights City Council. My father was a police officer in New Mexico before we moved to this community to start over. My mom quickly got involved, serving on the Grant School District School Board, so serving community service runs deep in my family. My wife Laura and I, who's in the front row, own a home here and are looking forward to raising our family in Citrus Heights. I have been involved in the community for years, serving on the Resident Empowerment Association and the Birdcage Neighborhood Heights Association. It was through that volunteer work that I met now Supervisor Sue Frost. I am proud to have earned her support in this race. I have also earned the support of the Sacramento County Firefighters. I also earned the support today of the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association PAC, as well as local businesses and community leaders. I started working in construction at nineteen years old, and I know what hard work means. I poured concrete, built bridges, laid pipelines, and even worked in a coal-burning power plant.
Thank you. Wow.
I don't know if sixty seconds is long enough, Ray, but such as it is.
Go ahead, Al.
Good evening. My name is Albert Fox. I'm a member of the city council, having been appointed a year and a half ago to fill a then-vacant seat. I have been active with the city since 2001, when we moved here, having volunteered with some different programs. And eventually, one of my first large programs here was to be part of the Law Enforcement Citizens Oversight Committee, or Advisory Committee, in which we held the hearings and started our police department. I am very pleased to say that after that, I was appointed to the Planning Commission, where I served for almost nine years, two years as the chairman. And other than the grandfather of planning, Mr. Duncan, I am probably the longest-serving member of the Planning Commission, at least that I'm aware of. I have been very active with our community, my law enforcement career and background. I served under several political leaders and understand the politics and the things that need to get done in the way to do them. I've been very active in our plans for the city, for our growth, and I intend to stay involved. Thank you.
Portia.
Good evening, everyone. I am Portia Middleton, and I am a planning commissioner appointed by Steve Miller. I have been working in our community for the past two years. I have served as the Secretary of the Rotary Board. I have been part of our neighborhood associations. I do tons of volunteer work with my children at their schools. And I am proud to say that I serve this community, and I like to listen and to learn and to understand everything that's going on. Previously to this, when we lived in Kentucky, as a college student, I worked for a mayor, and I built bridges, I built communities. I learned early on what it meant to have community buy-in and inclusivity, and how you really build a structure that a community can thrive in. And business development is critical to that. And it takes a lot to get everyone at the table, to sit around and come to a conclusion and all agree upon everything. And we're not always going to get along, but I learned the hard way a long time ago that you have to really work together in order to accomplish anything.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jeannie Bruins. I am a thirty-four-year resident of Citrus Heights. I am your longest-serving city council member in my sixteenth year. I've served three terms as mayor and four terms as vice mayor. I've been involved with the city before we were a city. Originally, running the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce for twelve years, supporting our business community, served on the CPAC Board as an appointee of Supervisor Roger Nilo. I co-chaired the campaign for Cityhood, Yes on Measure R, which brought Cityhood to Citrus Heights, the first city in Sacramento County to incorporate in fifty years. I'm the most qualified candidate to serve on the city council because I do have solid roots in Citrus Heights. And I am poised to lead the charge for new growth, because we are at a time in our history in Citrus Heights where things are changing, and we need to be poised to change with them. Thank you.
Steve.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event. A little bit about myself, I've been married to Nanette for thirty-four years. We've also lived in Citrus Heights for thirty-four years, raised our two children, and now have six grandkids. One of the things that I stand out with is my experience in the community as the Citrus Heights Relay for Life Logistics Chair, Lions Club President, two years, member of the Rotary, graduate of the 2003 Citrus Heights Leadership, Neighborhood Area Ten Vice President and Reach Representative, Chamber of Commerce Vice President for many years of Government Affairs. I was also on the Law Enforcement CAC with Al. Served now on the Army Community Advisory Board. I've been on the city council for twelve-plus years and served as mayor for three of those years. And it's a pleasure to be here to discuss what we have done and what we will do in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's see how technology's going to behave naturally. There you go. So these are the questions. In this case, this is the only question that's going to be somewhat different for the candidates. For our new candidates, the question will be, how many city council meetings have you attended? How often have you made comments before the city council? And what issues have you raised and the results of, or the outcome of, any comments you've brought before the city council? For the incumbents, a fairly simple question, what has been your greatest accomplishment while you've been seating on the city council? We're going to rotate the questions in the same manner. So, Al, you are the first to answer, and you'll have ninety seconds on this question.
Thank you. Since my appointment to the city council, one of the very first things that's happened is I was assigned to two commissions, which we serve on countywide. One of those commissions was the Sacramento Transit Authority. Living in Citrus Heights, we soon learned to understand that the formula which they use to disperse funds to help our city, which we are able to use to grow, are very difficult to work under, because it's based upon population and a lot of other figures. And in so doing, we don't really get the amount of money it takes necessary to do a lot of the programs. So I very quickly had to learn how to negotiate that particular realm of dealing with the other cities and county reps in our area who serve on that board. One of the great things that I was at least a small part of was what we now see as Smart RT for Citrus Heights in helping Steve and his, the efforts that he made on RT, to get the funding going, to keep the pressure going that caused RT to bring that service here, to service our families, our students, those who do not have transportation. And I think that probably is the most important accomplishment I've made, because it has given members of our community freedom to travel, it gives them a way to get to their appointments, and we can cross jurisdictions for hospital and doctor's appointments across over to Riverside to the hospital there. So this one accomplishment itself, I think, is probably the most significant thing for me, and the most of which I enjoyed working on.
Thank you. The second, Portia.
I cannot tell you how many city council meetings I have attended in the last year. I can tell you that I've missed two that I can recall offhand. And one of the comments that I made before the council during a study session was when we talked about the History and Arts Commission, and how we could further develop it so that it would be more inclusive to our community, so individuals that have special projects or that want to participate and show and make our city shine could have that opportunity. And I worked closely with Catherine Cooley to help develop that, and we talked about other programs that I had worked on previously, because I used to own an art gallery, and how you can get community buy-in and community projects. So one of those projects that came before out of that was the Rush Community Home, where they opened the home up, and people got to walk through the Rush Home. And I was very happy to be able to take my son through there and have them learn about the history of our community. And the second would be the book, the history book that's going to be developed about the history of Citrus Heights. Anything that the community is interested in, people can apply for these grants and be able to help further the knowledge of the residents in the community and to help it shine. Arts and history are critically important for our community, especially based upon the work that the individuals that are sitting right here beside me have done to make sure that our city became a city. And I'm proud to have led the efforts for that.
It'll be okay. Thank you. Jeannie.
In the sixteen years that I've served on the city council, there have been some very significant votes that I have supported. The most significant one has to be the forming of our own police department, which brought award-winning policing services to Citrus Heights in 2006 that continues to serve our community and to lead the way in community-oriented policing in the region and the state of California. In addition to that, another vote that I'm very proud to have supported, and it took me a while to get there, was the selling of our old property in the building of Dignity Health Medical Building. This is going to prove to serve our citizens for generations to come, as fifty doctors and one hundred and twenty support staff next year will be occupying that building and providing medical services to Citrus Heights that we haven't had before. And those are all very important, but some of the most significant things that I've done for our community have not made headlines. I've worked with local neighborhoods to solve problems. And one of them that I'm very proud of is our neighborhood called Chapel View. Because of my position on the Regional Sanitation Board for the last sixteen years, I was able to help this small community of seventy homes solve problems that had divided their community because of, part of their homes were on the local sewer system and part of them were on the regional. I was able to bring them together, along with a vote on the sanitation board, to upgrade and provide adequate sewer service for them.
Thank you. Steve.
Ms. Bruins brings up one of the most satisfying parts of being a council member, is the fact that citizens can come in and talk to a council member and get problems solved. And those are things that just go on behind the scenes, and you really don't get credit for it. So kudos, Jeannie. And I was going to talk about the Smart Ride. That was something that came up at a neighborhood barbecue over a year ago, when Peter Firpo, one of our residents, asked me if there was any way we could do on-demand transit. And a conversation ensued on a trip down to Capitol Corridor meeting, where I'm a board member. And it was one of the newer employees at RT, and she had heard of some software that could be used. And out of that grew the Smart Ride program, that actually given mobility and spontaneity to our seniors, disabled, and youth, to be able to travel door-to-door. And it's the first citywide on-demand service in the nation. I'm very proud of that, and I'm very happy that Al and STA helped fund that. And the second one I thought of, and it's about relationships and experience that we have, back in DC, I was lobbying for the Metro Chamber and the region for transportation projects. And in the evening, when I was having dinner, I ran into Maurice Johnson, Assistant Chief in the Fire Department. And ever since the Great Recession, and I'm probably not going to be able to finish, we did not have anybody from the Fire Department here to process permits for businesses. From that conversation, we were able to bring them into City Hall, and now it speeds up permitting for our businesses, and I'm very proud to accomplish that. Thank you.
Thank you. Tristan, you're to the first part of the question.
All righty. So I believe I've been to about six city council meetings since I've lived here. I'm lucky enough, since the first month that my wife and I moved to Citrus Heights, I was appointed to, or actually, I was appointed to the Citrus Heights Birdcage Heights Neighborhood Association, Area Eleven. And with that, then I was appointed to the Reach Board as a representative. I was able to form decent relationships with Sue Frost and Mel Turner. I was able to address them personally, one-on-one, and I've also been able to work with city staff on a one-on-one basis whenever I have concern. So I never had a need to address the city council in a public forum. I'm lucky that the city council, at that time, was open to receiving comments from the public whenever you had a concern. And that's one thing I'd like to bring back to the city council, is anybody in the neighborhood should be able to reach out to a city council member through email, through phone, through walking in the office, and try to get some concerns answered that way. Thank you.
It did work earlier. Wait, nope, there it is. Question number three, and this time, we will be starting with Portia. What are your top priorities, what are your top three priorities for the city of Citrus Heights, and how would you like to address those priorities? And we'll have two minutes on this question. If you only have two priorities, then two's enough.
Okay. Well, first off, economic development, public safety, quality of life. And those three things all go hand in hand. Without economic development, we don't have the business base that we need to produce the revenue in order to fund the roads and to fund our police department. And these are critical in order for us to feel safe and to have excellent quality of life. I would address these priorities by looking and thinking outside of the box and looking in a different way about how we can bring businesses to our community that fit. We know that we're an infill city. We have a limited space to develop, so we have to be especially careful about how we use our staff, our time, and our space that we have to develop. Sunrise Mall is something that is very difficult to develop because of the different ownerships and, you know, businesses are closing faster than we all can figure out what else to go there. And that's no different than our restaurants, where, you know, we all love to go out, we love to eat and hang out with our family and have that sense of community. But as soon as we can approve projects, it seems as if more businesses are closing. So we have to really critically look at that and address the issue of why that's happening. And when we do that, that'll increase the funding that we have to develop and use towards improving our roads, putting streetlights and sidewalks in neighborhoods that are adequate, and expanding that quality of life. We want to make sure that our roads are safe, our community parks are safe, just our community in general is safe, and that we can walk about and feel safe in it and live and thrive. I'm just, at this point, I'm wondering, how do we do that as a community? And it really takes a lot of buy-in. It takes talking to other individuals. I have worked with outside organizations. I have worked with outside community organizations and talked to them about, what do we do? I'm endorsed by Regent Business, and we've talked about what it would take to put Citrus Heights on the map, but also maintain our small-town charm.
Thank you. Jeannie?
My three top priorities for the next term are economic development, education, and creative solutions to maintain our financial fiscal stability. In economic development, we have been a city that has relied on sales tax dollars as our largest pot of money. That's still true of us. But we are in a changing economy, and as leaders in this community, we need to recognize and address the fact that we need to do things differently in Citrus Heights if we're going to continue to maintain our solid financial standing. One way to do that is to work with local people who, within the region, see the value of what Citrus Heights is, and to address things such as the Sunrise Mall, other vacancies that we have in our community, but to continue to forge relationships with people that are here locally, within the Sacramento region, that have an interest in seeing Citrus Heights succeed. Regarding education, as you know, we don't control our school district. They have their own board, they have their own structure. But I have worked hand-in-hand, side-by-side, for over twenty years to try to affect better education in Citrus Heights, not only as a council member, but as a businessperson and a member of the Chamber of Commerce. I serve on a two-by-two education committee. We have brought innovative solutions to our school district that have not been listened to. And if I am re-elected, I plan to take this by the, take the lead on getting better education in Citrus Heights, if it means even starting our own charter school, which we are prepared to do. And third, creative solutions to the next four years. In four years, we get our property tax back. We've got to get to the next four years by continuing to move our community forward, as well as maintaining our reserves. Thank you.
Steve.
Thank you, Ray. My number-one priority has always been financial stability and accountability to the taxpayers. Every year, we've balanced our budget, we've had no debt, our pension and other post-employment benefits are paid, spending is under budget every year, and I credit staff with that accomplishment. And it's going to be tight for the next four years. It's very critical. We've managed our budget all the way up to revenue neutrality, and it's going to be razor-thin in the next four years. And so it's very important to me that we keep our eye on the ball and come up with some creative solutions that don't involve raising taxes. I also concur that economic development's important, and it's more than providing just incentives to businesses, but we do. We provide sewer credits, facade improvement grants, sign grants. We do special events, and we support this Chamber of Commerce and the business districts in our city. But ED is also attracting and diversifying our retail for a changing economy. It's quality housing, and I support the proposed ordinance for rental housing inspection program. It's public safety. It's education, a ready workforce. It's arts and entertainment options, transit options, and improvements that we can do to our major thoroughfares. But we have a lot of work to do, and I'd like to talk later, hopefully the questions allow, talk a little bit about the mall. But as far as education goes, we definitely need to make it better. I think our schools actually do a good job preparing kids for college, but not everybody is ready or are able to go to college. And I think we need to improve upon our career technology and the demand for programming, IT, medical, construction, automotive, and, of course, autonomous vehicles are coming down the road. We need to get our kids ready for those jobs. I'm very proud that we're opening a public safety academy at Mason Verdy High School.
Thank you.
Thank you. My top three priorities, the first one would be public safety and homelessness. In Citrus Heights, the homeless problem has only gotten worse. They sleep in front of businesses at night and leave trash or drug items in open sight, and the owners are left to clean it up. I will work to create a homeless outreach team similar to the Sheriff's Program of Scott Jones, and encourage community-based organizations like Heart and St. John Shelter to continue partnering with the Citrus Heights Police Department and getting the homeless off the streets. My second priority is economic development. I would like to instruct city staff to develop a one-day permitting process, no fees or taxes on business or residence, without it going to a vote to the citizens. In my professional career, for the past ten years, I have worked on workforce, economic and housing development, bringing developers, government, and workers together to ensure vital housing. And commercial projects move forward, powering the free-market economy while ensuring that workers are treated fairly and the community benefits from the project. My third priority is fiscal responsibility. I'd like to get back to a balanced budget. If you look at the city's ten-year budget plan, they are a balanced budget for 2018-19. The city does not have, or I would like to build the reserves up to at least a twenty percent reserve. Current reserves are going down every year until 2022, when our reserves will be down to less than $400,000, which is less than two percent. One thing I'd like to see is if you actually look at the line items for the city's budget, they don't have a line item for reserves. Financial experts recommend that the way to ensure financial success for families is plan to save. Making retirement and savings a budget item. The city should do the same thing as well. Thank you.
Al?
When you go on the computer, you're a new person looking for a place to move in the Sacramento region, you Google Citrus Heights, you see two things: difficulty with their schools, their education standards, and their housing. Those are a couple of things that we can deal with and that we're in the process of doing that now. But we need the cooperation of the school district, in which we are working from a couple of different angles to get. Within the United States today, and at least in one industry that I'm aware of, there goes one million jobs a year unfilled that require high school education, drug-free work environment, and showing up on time. That's what it requires. It's not four years of college, it's not two years of college. Those are some things that we need to help grow, and we can have that done through our school district, if we can get them to work with us, and develop a CTE program within Citrus Heights. We need to develop a forward-thinking process on how we're going to deal with land. We have some significant parcels of land, including the Sunrise Mall, that are ripe for development, but we have to make smart development. We have to bring our development up to a point to where we're meeting the modern-day standards. We have to have IT-compatible buildings. We have to have some Class I business buildings to draw those folks here. We're not an industrial city. We're not going to get a large industrial plant or commercial plant in our area. So let's do what we can do best, and that's working with the IT area. And the last one is police services. I want to see our police department continue the downward spiral of crime that we have going right now, it's less than it has been, and it continues to do that quarter after quarter. I want to see them complete, or not complete, but to continue working with our Navigator Program, a national awarded program for dealing with our homeless, which we work very actively, and we have one of the most active programs in the Capitol Region. We can be a regional leadership in Citrus Heights for Northern Sacramento. That's where we need to go.
Very good. Thank you. The next question, we'll start with you, Jeannie. It's going to be, how should homelessness be addressed in Citrus Heights?
Homelessness is an ongoing issue. I remember there was a time in Citrus Heights when we didn't have homeless people, but I think those days are past. I think that we need to continue doing what we're doing and doing more. We have a police department that knows who our homeless people are. They are proactively, day by day, dealing with the homeless people in Citrus Heights. Homelessness is not a crime. We all know that. It's the behavior of homeless people that sometimes gets them in trouble. We have to expand our resources, continue to work with our Heart team, to continue to fully fund our Navigator Program, which has become a star program in this region. Our navigator is being asked, Tony is being asked to train other navigators throughout the Sacramento region to replicate what we're doing in Citrus Heights. As services continue to become available to us, we need to make sure that we take advantage of them. Homelessness is not a problem that's going to be solved overnight, and it's not a problem that's going to be served by one city or one department. One of the things that we are doing now, and I totally support it, is that we are working hand-in-hand with the region to address homelessness on a larger scale, because the homeless do not know boundaries. So my final response to that is that we need to continue to So my final response to that is that we need to continue to work collaboratively within Citrus Heights and with our region as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, I totally agree. Our Navigator Program is very successful. Believe it or not, we've actually reduced the numbers, and coincidentally, we've also reduced property crimes. They're down by 11%, and I don't know if there's a correlation there, but I think there is. We've worked with our businesses and our apartment owners. Our police now, with problem trespass homeless folks, were able to issue trespass citations, and if they keep coming back, the police can deal with that. Our volunteers in the community, especially the homeless Assistance and Resource Team, or Heart that Jeanne mentioned, provides a winter sanctuary through our churches. And really, the biggest complaints I hear is the homelessness and the drug use in our parks. And we need to take back our parks. Now, they're county parks, but we have authorized our police to go in. We've provided security cameras at Rush Park now. They're not online yet, but hopefully that'll deter some of the issues there. Our POP officers actively work these, and I've talked to the chief. In the past, the county had a park ranger, and I think that handled a lot of issues in our parks. And I'm proposing that we actually put together park resource officers that can focus on the parks much like our school resources officers focus on our schools. Thank you.
Tristan?
Thank you. I've been able to speak with people about the Navigator Program, and I believe it's a great program. I think we need to continue with that, and I think Jeanne's right about trying to keep it fully funded. We need to step up enforcement to reduce the impact of the petty crimes that are having on our homeowners and businesses, increasing the patrols of the Citrus Heights PD business areas, day and night, partner with as many community-based organizations as possible to help assist with the homelessness population, and try to partner with the Citrus Heights Police in their patrols or during the yearly homeless population surveys. Recently, I had the opportunity to sit down with the Sacramento County Probation Association, and they brought something to light that I was unaware of. And what it is, is when we actually offer more services here in the city, we're actually drawing more homeless people into the city. So we need to try to focus on helping the homeless that are homeless, not because they want to be, but because they either lost their housing, because they can't afford it, they have mental problems, or they have drug issues. We need to focus most of our resources on them. And for the people who are here, who are homeless, just because they want to be homeless and don't want to do anything, we need to enforce our laws on them very strictly and try to push those people out of Citrus Heights, because they're not doing anybody any benefit, and it's a waste of our resources to be doing anything with them. Thank you.
Al?
One of the saddest parts of the homeless population is we have 800 students in Citrus Heights who are homeless on any given night. They're not homeless and on the street necessarily. They're homeless. They're bed surfing or couch surfing in homes of family, other family members, friends, neighbors. They've been kicked out of their homes for whatever reason, but 800 students. That is absolutely unthinkable in our community today, but we do have it, and we need to face it. There are some homeless issues that I think we don't talk about enough. We have our resident homeless. They're Citrus Heights residents. Some of them don't want to change. They've told us, "I like where I'm at." Then we have those who are willing to change. They're willing to work with the Navigator. They have. They get identification cards. They get IDs for computer access. They get housing. They get moved on to services that they qualify for through our Navigator Program, and we're working that very stringently. But then we have a problem with transit homeless. Those are the ones who move in and out of Citrus Heights on a daily basis, coming out of North Sacramento County, coming out of Placer County, around the railroad tracks. They move into our areas. They are looking to sponge dollar bills, go through the garbage. They come in the evenings. They're the ones that are breaking into your cars, taking change out of the cigarette butt container in your car. Those are the ones we hear about. You see them on Facebook all the time. Those are the crimes they're committing. We need to focus on those also. It is not an overnight program that we can solve, but it's one we need to continue working on.
Thank you. Portia?
So, a lot of good points, and they're all valid. Homelessness is a regional issue, and we do need to make sure our Navigator Program is fully funded. We do need to expand our Heart Program. And, you know, my husband and I, in our home, we've been a victim of, you know, people breaking into our cars three times in the last year. And we live in a cul-de-sac. We used to take nightly walks in the evening with our family, and we don't do that anymore, because, you know, there are people kind of lurking about, and we're worried about, you know, them attacking us or our kids. We have to maintain our safety. But I want to focus on some of the issues that we can solve, which is that 30% regionally of the people who are homeless in our region are veterans. They suffer from PTSD. They don't have an ID card. They can't get the services that they need. So that is one way that we know that we can fix that, because the county is offering mental health services to those individuals who suffer from mental illnesses, or are veterans. And they've formed a veterans committee to help track down and find these veterans to make sure that we're able to serve them and get them off the streets and into homes, because they have benefits. And my mother and I have worked within our community to find these veterans, get them the benefits that they deserve, get them into the VA system, get them the medical care that they need, and house them. And that is one of the things that I'm very passionate about, and that we've worked very hard to do. And I also encourage people to join a neighborhood watch. Our neighborhood association is very fortunate that we have a very strong neighborhood watch, and I would encourage everyone to get involved with their neighborhood associations and develop one.
Thank you. This next question, we'll start with you, Steve. It's only a 60-second one, so you're going to have to beat me up again.
All right.
"In three years, or four years according to the council members, the city will begin to receive property tax revenue. The amount has been conservatively estimated at $5 million per year. How should the city prepare for this additional income? What is the best use of these funds?"
Well, I think by the time it comes around, it's over $5 million now, and I believe it'll hit $6 million by the time we start receiving the property taxes with the 2% increases that we see every year. We've prepared. We've set policies in that we will be putting aside money and building back our reserve. We knew we would have to draw it down to make it to the end of our revenue neutrality agreement, and I think that's a prudent... What that number is, $2 to $3 million a year. In 10 years, we can have our reserve back up to $20 to $30 million. I also think it'll give us an opportunity to pave our residential streets finally. I know the original city council started out trying to do that in 10 years, you know, one year doing a 10% of the paving of the residential streets, but that became far too expensive. We spend over $1 million a year now on residential paving. I think we'll lose the gas tax. I think it'll be defeated in November, and that would be $1.4 million we're losing. So I think finally we'll be able to address some of our residential infrastructure needs.
Thank you. Tristan?
Thank you. So if you actually look at the city budget, it does show that we will be getting our property taxes in 2022. And that's important, because the city actually has the sales tax for the city going up. Now, we are a brick-and-mortar community. We have been for years and years and years. And two of the largest sales tax contributors were Sears and Toys R' Us. Both of those are gone. So for us to... For the city to assume that the sales tax are going to continue to go up, I believe is not true. And that's a majority of our money for the city. So we need to focus. As soon as we start getting those property taxes, we need to make sure those property taxes, first and foremost, is part of a line item, which is building the reserves back up. We need to make sure the police and the public safety has everything they need to do what they need to do here in the community, to make sure everybody's safe. We need to rebuild our roads and the infrastructure in Citrus Heights. Everybody knows they are awful, and if the city does lose the SB 1 funding... Sorry. Okay, thank you.
And if they do lose their SB 1 funding, which it looks like they're going to, we still have the opportunity to be prepared to meet the needs that we have for infrastructure improvements with the fundings that come out of the property tax, because it'll give us more money to have matching funds to go off with the grants necessary to make those things happen. A couple of other things: we need to build up the reserves, as somebody else said. And we need to completely fund and make sure that we have our PERS retirement obligations solvent for the city. So many cities in our area in Northern California are nearing bankruptcy because of their PERS commitment to their employees that they're not able to cover. Those reserves have got to be handled and prepared. We're doing a great job of that, better than most, and we need to continue that. Property taxes are not the save-all for the city, but they will definitely get us to the point where we can continue to serve our community better.
Thank you. Portia?
Well, all the good answers are taken. But they're all true. We need to build back our reserves. We need to get ourselves back to where we were 10 years ago when we had, you know, $20 million-plus in the bank, and we, you know, we knew that we could weather a storm. That's important. We need to make sure that we're able to put aside money into our reserves, rebuild and re-surface our streets. We need to make sure that our commitment to our city employees is honored, because they work for us and they serve us, and that's important. That's critical. And we also need to make sure that we really be very frugal and conservative about any new projects that we take on. We need to make sure that we are very careful about spending money. My husband and I live off of one income, and we're very conservative about how we spend our money. We're not frivolous, and so I understand the city budget and why things are being done the way they're being done, but we also need to make sure that we are taken care of as citizens.
Thank you. Jeanne?
Well, thank you. I think we all agree we need roads, and so I'm not going to readdress that. But what I would like to say is that we've gotten this far because we intentionally budgeted on a 10-year model. And when we became a city, we knew that we wouldn't have our property tax for 25 years as a result of revenue neutrality. We thought that we'd have crossed over much sooner than now, where we would have had to take our reserves and use them for operating expenses. Because of our philosophy and prudent financial management, we have not had to do that. The reason our reserves are low is because they weren't earning us any money after the economy tanked, and we weren't getting $2 to $3 million in dividends and interest a year. So we intentionally used our funds to better our community. So going forward, when we get our revenue neutrality money back, that's the time where we will prioritize redeveloping and growing our reserves as well as addressing infrastructure issues.
Thank you. Tristan, we're moving back to you for the first answer. "About a year ago, the city council created a strategic planning goal to diversify for a changing economy. What does a diverse Citrus Heights economy look like for you?"
So one thing that I've heard in the community is that we are an entertainment dead zone. So Citrus Heights has a lot of restaurants, a lot of places to eat, places to shop, but we don't have any entertainment. And I think that's one thing that the city needs to readdress, is how we can reach out to businesses, because we're sandwiched between Folsom and Roseville and Rancho Cordova, all three cities that can grow and get bigger, while we're 98% landlocked. I think it's important that we realize the first thing we need to do is the expedited permitting process. We need to let developers and businesses know they can come into the community, they can get a permit in one day, and redevelop the entire city, if that's what they need to do. They should be able to look at existing structures and go, "How can we look at this and go, 'We could turn this into an entertainment hub.'" We have the Studio Movie Grill going in over off of Auburn Boulevard, yeah, off of Auburn, which is fantastic, and that's just the first step. But besides that, we need to let people know that we are the most business-friendly city in Sacramento County. We need to put Folsom, Roseville, Rancho Cordova behind us and say, "Hey, if you want to do business in Sac County, you come to Citrus Heights." Thank you.
Al?
We're in the fortunate and unfortunate position of being a transit city. We have so many pass-through roads that are busier in our city than anyplace else. Madison, Sunrise, Greenback, Auburn Boulevard, Sylvan Road, Antelope, some of the busiest intersections in the county. Sunrise, Greenback, one of the busiest. We have the opportunity to start building our city now for the future because of what we have coming up available to us in land options. It's a changing economy. Brick-and-mortar is going away rapidly. Online is becoming the way most people are doing business, but that doesn't mean brick-and-mortar shops are going away. It means they're going to be smaller. It means they're going to be a little more diversified in some areas, but you're going to see some very good specialties also. And we need to be prepared to build for those. And I think, and I should say, I know there are developers out there who have plans in which those things will work. Our economy is such that we need to start building for the IT or the artificial intelligent world and be prepared to work in that world. There's a lot of it coming our way, and if we are prepared, we can draw those businesses to us. In terms of entertainment, absolutely. We're in the center of an area which we could draw a whole lot of people and serve as a regional draw for them if we plan this right and if we do it with the proper suppliers, vendors, and companies.
Thank you. Portia?
So this is something that I've talked with a lot of you about extensively, what that looks like. I've heard everything from, "Yes, we need to be an entertainment district." We need, you know, what was someone put on Facebook? You know, "Less food, more fun." And I agree with that sentiment. We need to become more family-friendly. That's part of our branding at this point, you know, solid roots, new growth. We're trying to bring in those new families into our community. So that means we have to be family-friendly and have things for our families to do in our community. And that starts with walkability. It starts with expanding, continuing that expansion of the Smart Ride and making sure that people can get around from place to place. It means mixed-use developments. So you might have businesses on a bottom floor, and then homes or condos or even law offices or something on the top area. It's thinking outside of the box, and it's something that I did over 10 years ago in Louisville, Kentucky, and I know that that model works. It stood the test of time, where you make sure that everything is in one spot and people don't feel the need to go to Roseville or to Folsom. You find the best and the brightest that there is in those areas, and you try to put them in here, and people will automatically flock here, and they'll want to stay here and bring their families here. And that'll help to kickstart our school systems, because at that point, we have a voice. We say, "We generate money. We have revenue. We have entertainment sector. We have families here. We have a stronger voice to put pressure where we need to, to improve the areas where we don't necessarily have control."
Thank you. Jeanne?
We recognize that in Citrus Heights, for us to thrive, that we need to reach outside of our primary market when it comes to our commercial and business community. And so a lot of our attention has gone to, "How do we bring in the secondary market?" It's like the rings of a puddle where the ripple effect continues on. What can we do to attract people that don't live in Citrus Heights to come to Citrus Heights to do business? It's true that brick-and-mortar is going away, the big box, the shopping center. So diversification includes mixed-use. We've been working on that for a number of years. We need to kickstart that into a higher level. What else diversification means is that we need to provide for diversified housing in Citrus Heights. And our Mitchell Farms is one project that is going to be doing that, but we need to look beyond that. We need to be ready to go up, because we can't go out. I know the medical center was controversial when it first was developed, because it was a three-story building. We only have one other commercial three-story building in Citrus Heights. But as we get hold of redeveloping Sunrise Mall, working with a developer that gets identified, that has the funding and the vision to do it, that we be willing, as a community, to go up. That will provide us the ability to provide housing, to provide jobs for people that are non-retail, and to support the businesses that are already in our community.
Thank you. Steve?
Thank you. You know, 100,000 cars travel by our mall every day. Very few stop. There's 92 acres there, and I think this is indicative of our economy. I believe we're over-retailed. We do depend on retail sales. Costco, Sam's Club, and Walmart have filled that void that the mall used to provide. We've had three ownership groups there with no redevelopment. And I know we've tried with our visioning process to help that along. Recently, we okayed $300,000 contribution grant from the city to the Sunrise Marketplace for a pop-up stadium. We couldn't get the mall owners to commit to that project, which has proven to bring folks in from our secondary trade zones and shop and go to restaurants and see a show in Citrus Heights. I plan to work with local investors and developers, key players in the Sacramento region, to look at getting a local ownership group for our mall. And what I envision, and envision for the rest of the city, is things like a permanent farmer's market, an enclosure over the top, so we can be there on 108-degree days and in the rain. A green space that could be used for concerts and such at the mall, providing for entertainment. I've heard kid-friendly, family-friendly. We could have ice skating there. And I see possible mixed-use in housing creeping into the mall area.
Thank you, Steve. So we're going to start with Al on this one. And this is an extension of the previous question. When deciding where to locate, business owners and developers consider metrics that are outside of government control. The cost of living, education of employees, availability of customers are just a few of the issues that businesses and developers face. Given those challenges, how can the city attract the new businesses and development community to consider doing business in Citrus Heights? And how would you, as a council member, contribute to this effort?
I think I started a little bit on this question earlier. When I said, when you Google Citrus Heights, two things pop up. And they're not good schools and there's not real good housing. Mitchell Farms is a great start to that, along with a couple of other projects we have already either completed or in the process of completing right now that are going to give us a great stride on the housing market, a modern housing, more in tune with what folks want and in the size they want. And walkability, when that is done, it's walkability from those homes all the way over to Sunrise. We need to start developing those areas. We need to work with the school district and that started. It's also started with the Sacramento Fire Department. I'm on a two-by-two committee and we met with them. And we're talking about the need for a safety academy that's going in here now at Mesa Verde. We're also in the need for CTE education, getting the school district to see us as a viable location. And I think it might have been Jeanie said, even if that includes going to a charter school, to bring students here in order to accomplish that. Because when people see us, they want to see education. They want to see what their kids have available to them. We have one charter elementary school in Citrus Heights that's doing extremely well. I'm not saying let's sell out public education. I'm saying that as a city council and as a city, we need to get working with those folks to start bringing in educational programs that are really going to work here. And dealing with people who want everything towards the south of the district is very hard to do. We need to talk to businesses who are willing to come here, take a chance on Citrus Heights, and are willing to work with us to grow. And those businesses are out there, they're just looking for the opportunities. And we've started building those opportunities for them in the quick turnaround of their permitting process already, having somebody from the fire safety inspector's office here right now, passing those permits through. We're getting permits through in a day. We're getting things done very quickly. So we have the foundation started. We just need to continue.
Thank you. Portia?
I have to agree with Mr. Fox. We do have the foundation. We have a low cost of living at this point. We've developed housing. We approved Mitchell Farms on the planning commission and we recently approved smaller lot development for acres that are a little bit smaller than an acre. So we could put smaller homes in there that are more densely put in, but still have enough space that, you know, they have a backyard and all those good things that families want. But not necessarily, you know, a quarter of an acre, which most millennials don't want. And, but the key here is that San Juan High School has a construction and building program that is literally dying on the vine. They have little to no enrollment. It's not very widely known. As a board member of the Sacramento Regional Conservation Corps, we struggle with being able to help developers find skilled workers that come in, that are coming out of high school who don't want to go to college to fill the need for development. And I think that that's why that Citrus Heights is having a tough time with development. We don't, we're not utilizing the programs that are already there and we're not, we don't, we can't produce the workforce necessary. So they're going to, you know, Southern California. They're going to Rancho. They're going to Folsom. They're going everywhere else around us because they have a strong labor force base there. However, those individuals are aging out. So this program at San Juan teaches people how to weld. It teaches them about bricklaying, concrete, everything you can imagine. The things that you need to literally build a structure is what it teaches, but is not being utilized. And it's something that is critically important. I can't stress that enough about how if you're talking about you want to educate our students and you want them to be successful, you want them to graduate from college without debt. If they don't want to go to college, you want to have them an opportunity. We have to sit there and we have to have a strong talk with our school board members about putting the funding and putting the priority back on helping our students develop a skilled trade so that they can live a life where they're not worried about minimum wage and how they're going to be able to afford to buy a house. Citrus Heights has a wonderful housing program where if you can buy a house here, you can get $30,000 in a grant to help you for the down payment. But if you don't have that skill, you can't get that house.
Thank you. Jeanie?
So I'm hearing education and housing and I agree with those elements. In addition to that, we need to understand that we are not an island here in Citrus Heights. We are part of a greater whole. And we have a wonderful resource in the regional economic development organization that has been working with Citrus Heights, with our, with our city manager, our city council, and with our staff to not only help us identify and bring businesses to Citrus Heights, but also to work with our local developers, our local landowners. And I think we have to nurture what we already have. We have landowners and developers here in Citrus Heights that need their skill set elevated. They need their vision broadened and we have the tools to do that as a city. And as your city council member, I will commit to working with the Greater Economic Development Commission to help our landowners raise their sites so that we can have greater development in Citrus Heights on a commercial basis. At the same time, we do have factors out of our control directly, but with whom we have the ability to influence them. And the school district is at the top. I've heard our school superintendent say of San Juan High School, we invested $35 million in that school and we thought they would come. Well, I don't understand how that equates. I'm very happy to have a beautiful campus in Citrus Heights on Greenback Lane, but you just can't expect them to come. You have to have something to offer them. And we have researched as a city and we have visited a model of a dynamic school that is located in Fairfield that we have brought to our school district and they've turned their, a deaf ear to it and said, yes, go ahead and start your charter school. So that will be one of the things that I will do as a re-elected official is to bring better education to Citrus Heights.
Steve?
Okay, I do agree with the education component and having a job-ready workforce and of course, housing that attracts new families. I think we do have a fairly good cost of living. Jeanie mentioned the Sacramento Economic Development Council. I recently took a course and became a certified champion. And what I learned is if, let's say, a big business is looking to locate in Elk Grove, well, that does benefit the entire region, including Citrus Heights. Some folks may buy their homes here. Some people would shop here. And how do we increase this awareness? Well, we've embarked on an awareness campaign. The region's perception of our city has not caught up with the reality of Citrus Heights, I think, in a lower cost of living. And we're a city that's been around for 170 years. I think Jack Duncan was here when that all started. We have both newness and strong traditions here and we have a history of self-reliance. I mean, that's why we became a city. We have the stability and support that everyone seeks. So again, we're putting out the word to developers with this, and, oh, business owners, that we have solid roots and we're looking for new growth in Citrus Heights. And I think that's important to get, to get the word out. And it's just starting to roll out. I know, Ray, you don't like our new logos. At least your first impression wasn't good. I know I gave my new business card to a friend and he says, oh, it looks like you're the mayor of the orange juice factory. But again, it's important to change the perception of Citrus Heights and attract folks from outside our city to shop here. And that's where we can build our customer base and not have our residents go outside the city to shop in adjoining Roseville or Folsom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So even though the question states outside of the city government's control, I believe that government has over-regulated so much that there's nothing outside of the government's control. And businesses will always look at the problem with the cities and the government's regulations first and foremost, beyond any issues with education, availability of employees. Citrus Heights needs new energy to tackle critical issues like this. My wife is a small business owner and so is my father-in-law. I see every day the burdensome regulations they have to go through just to keep the doors open. In my personal life, I work with small businesses on a daily basis and have for almost 10 years in eight different counties. I have the open mind and energy to tackle issues that face businesses in Citrus Heights and I'll partner with those businesses any way I can. I have been reviewing the permit simplicity program that would speed up the improvement development. And I also personally, in those eight counties, have set up pre-apprenticeship programs. And I would love to work with San Juan Unified School District to actually set up those programs. Those programs are completely free. They shouldn't cost the school district anything. They shouldn't cost the county anything. And besides construction, you could try to partner with other businesses in the area, whether it's technology, whether it's construction, whether it's all kinds of different stuff in that, in that aspect. And what we do is we actually try to get 20 to 30 participants to get involved in a pre-apprenticeship program. We supply free training to them. And when they graduate from the program, they're ready to go either into the workforce, go back to school, or do whatever they choose. But you can't do that without partnerships. And I believe getting some of the government regulation out of it and partnering with all these other groups that can do these things for free, businesses will come to Citrus Heights and say, hey, this is where I want to do my growing. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to you, Portia, for the first response to this. And it's a little more economic development. When I wrote this question, when I looked at it, the real important point in this one to me is as a council member, what innovative ideas do you have to spur economic development? So not so much, we know we've lost redevelopment funds, but what do you, what's your, all of you, what innovative ideas do you have to bring development to Citrus Heights?
Partnerships, building relationships. That's critical. It's key with the developers, with the people who are coming into the community, the ones who are willing to invest the money. We've seen things in the Bay Area where you see people like Microsoft or Facebook and they're willing to invest into communities as, you know, so long as, you know, like, let's say, we'll invest into a high school as long as we're able to put our laptops in there. Building those relationships, those partnerships, that's how you can work towards redevelopment for a city. It's critical. You just can't, we've done it alone for so long and we've done it well, but we're on the cusp of a change. And we have to really think outside that box about what does it look like to work within the mosaic of a region? How do we fit in? And what does that look like? And I think as a council member, I can, I can bring that because we've already started talking, my campaign and other developers have started talking with region business about, you know, we have the Golden One Arena. How can we capitalize off of that? Well, we could put a hotel here. We could put, maybe change the mall and find somebody who's willing to buy that mall and maybe put outlets there so people aren't going to Folsom for outlets. Let's make an entertainment district. What does that look like? That's how you, but you have to have people who have the money and are willing to come in here and develop. And you have to have the relationships with them and will be willing to compromise. And that's something that I don't think Citrus Heights has had to do because we've been doing this for, alone, by ourselves for so long.
Thank you. Jeanie?
One of the things that we can do as a city is to take a look at our current codes, our current zoning, and the ordinances under which we've operated for the last 20 years and see if they work going forward in the future. One of the, the hindrances to development and redevelopment is the fact that in any given shopping center or any given center, you may have anywhere from 10 to 30 landowners that own a piece of it. One of the things a lot of people don't know about the mall, they think the mall is owned by one person. It is not. Each major tenant in the mall owns their building, the dirt that they sit on and a portion of the parking lot. That has been a major hindrance in getting that mall to move forward, to be redeveloped and to grow and to become something better than what it is today. We, as a, as a city, can address that going forward as we take a look at ordinances that have been in place, that have been part of our general plan. And we can update our general plan to provide the ability to move forward without separating parcels out that will, that will hinder redevelopment in any given, in any given part of our city. Another commercial area that suffers from this is the commercial area outside of Stones Casino. There are, I think, 25 or 30 landowners that sit in that fallow, empty structure, commercial structure because they can't get together and move forward. We can address that as a city.
Thank you. Steve?
I think there's a number of innovative things we can do. And one thing government can do is public improvements. And you've seen it on Auburn Boulevard. We've completed phase one of the complete streets where we've undergrounded the utilities, put sidewalks, set back from the road, trees. We've done that on Sunrise Boulevard. We're doing it in phases. We do one thing, we do it well and move on to the next. And also on Antelope Boulevard, west of the freeway. These are things we can do to spur redevelopment. I think we have some work to do and we've, we've got some plans for what government, what the city can do to improve walkability around our major commercial centers like the mall. I've also been working on an idea of a community council, which is an organization of organizations where every service group, the Chamber of Commerce, representatives from all our organizations can get together and plan events. You know, right now, the city staff plans parades and Sunday, Fun Day, and they have jobs to do. And I'd like to see more community involvement in that. And it raises a spirit of wanting to be here. And that's something that Citrus Heights is known for, is our volunteerism. And in working together, we can raise all boats in the city. And I think those are, you know, as far as innovative ideas for economic development, we are doing them. And I've mentioned many of them already under economic development.
Thank you. Tristan?
Thank you. Again, permit simplicity. I would also push for regional transportation improvements like the Capital Connector, which although doesn't directly impact Citrus Heights, will be a critical regional transportation improvement that will help business. We need to further develop a regional voice for business attraction, which I think region business has done a really great job at doing, along with a comprehensive database of resources, buildings, building sites, et cetera, that can be quickly matched to new or growing business needs. The market drives economic development, but government can encourage it in a variety of ways. Part of the answer is getting government out of the way, easier permitting. But government can ensure infrastructure development that supports economic development. Government officials can help attract businesses, working with economic development agencies, to demonstrate to businesses their willingness to work with business to help them succeed. We can do a much better job coordinating between local jurisdictions as well. I personally sat on a economic development board, not here in Sacramento County, but every county has an economic development board, or at least many of them do. And it's a huge board of industry leaders, labor, people from the public, the school districts. And every one of those people sit at that table and they come up with ideas. Those economic development boards are crucial to expanding the economic development in a region. And I think that the cities and the businesses need to work together and actually take those workforce development boards and listen to each other and take those ideas and expand on what they've trying to, on what the redevelopment used to do. Thank you.
I think we've heard all some very good ideas and concepts and thoughts. There's a few things brewing though, that I think we haven't talked about that are going to be difficult for us as a city and as a jurisdiction. The, the state legislature, as it's often want to do, is considering some more restrictive type of legislative issues that are going to really put a hamper on our ability to control what we want to do and what we're able to do for our city that best grows our cities and serves our community. A couple of those things has to do with the, with the planning of where certain buildings or certain building activity can occur. There is some, some effort out there to make it so that we have a Bay Area rapid transit type of oversight where we are forced to do certain type of buildings within a, within a certain distance of any public transit stop. Those things are all counter to the design that Citrus Heights was handed from the county of Sacramento, whom we took over as a city. And so we have to be well aware of those things and prepared to, to make changes as necessary to grow our city. There are some other issues that I think we are prepared to handle. And the city is dealing with those folks through the League of California Cities, is handling some of these upcoming legislations that are counterproductive to our city's growth and to other cities who service the communities the way we do. And those are things that we are very good at and we're working very hard to do. And I think in order to accomplish what our folks here are talking about, we need to stay on top of those issues also and work collaborative within the region.
Thank you. We'll move on to a lengthy opportunity to talk about schools. We face declining enrollment, enrollment in Citrus Heights. We face declining enrollment, enrollment in Citrus Heights and low test scores. Students are opting to attend more attractive schools, still within the San Juan Unified School District but outside of the city's borders. Improving education within the city is a top priority and requires a strong partnership with the school district. What does a successful partnership look like and how will you contribute to that effort? Jeanne?
Thank you. Well, I've spoken about schools tonight already and I agree that our school system does not serve our community well. It's often referred to as the weakest link in our chain of economic development. I hear stories of people who come to work in this community, come to work in, in nonprofits and businesses in Citrus Heights, but don't live here because of the school system. I know people that open enroll their school, their children into neighboring school districts and our own superintendent has told us that Citrus Heights bleeds off a good 700 to 800 students a year to the Roseville School District. So we have been trying to partner with our school district and we will continue to do that. We want to be a, an assistant and an aide to them. We've offered marketing efforts to them, we will continue to do that. But I also believe that we need to step outside the box and partner with other entities such as other large charter schools who will hear what we have to say. We want better education in Citrus Heights. And if we can't get that by partnering with our local school district, we will get it by partnering with other entities who share our vision. We, as I mentioned earlier, we spent a day in Fairfield, or half a day in Fairfield and looked at a model of a public safety academy that we brought back to our school district. We're willing to put the elbow, the, the, the work into it, you know, put our feet to the mat to help to bring better education to Citrus Heights. They told us last week, have at it, we're not interested. So they basically opened the door for us to go in another direction. And as, and as we continue on a dual level to partner with our schools, to the, to do the best we can within their structure, I feel it's time for us to take another direction and partner either with other charter schools or other entities to bring an alternative model of education to Citrus Heights. And I'm willing to do that.
Steve?
Jeanne's correct, we've been trying to work with the school district. We do have a small version of the Public Safety Academy that'll be opening September 4th at Mesa Verde High School. It's basically ROTC, it's not really what we envision as a full academy on public safety and, and, which includes police and fire tracks at the school and includes a, a discipline component of that. Right now we, we have low test scores, it's very disappointing. Parents even in Citrus Heights, not only do they send them outside the district, but just outside our city limits, to schools that the school districts paid more attention to. Even with the bonds that we were paying on for modernization, our schools are falling apart. I'm very disappointed in the school district. So Jeanne's correct, maybe a, a charter school's the way to go, maybe our own school district. I mean, when we didn't get the services from the county, we formed a city to provide for ourselves. And that may take some doing, but it's always a possibility. And I think in the short term, we need to look at getting some folks from Citrus Heights on the school board to, to truly represent us. I mean, right now modernization money is going to other high schools to build football fields. And that's, that's just not what it's all about. I'm, I'm very disappointed with our school district. And if you'd asked me when I first ran 14 years ago about education, I would said, that's not in the city's purview, but it really is. It's so important for educating our kids, getting a job-ready workforce and providing, keeping our kids here in Citrus Heights. And those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Tristan?
Thank you. I believe we need to make Citrus Heights a place to live that people want to move to. I know some part of it is schools, but my wife and I, we don't have children yet, but when we looked at the school district, we knew that there's a chance it could get better. And I've actually met with the San Juan Teachers Association and talked to them about that. And they don't think the test scores are bad because the education system in San Juan School District is bad, but it's because they still offer the open enrollment system. And the open enrollment system, as soon as parents start to see better test scores at one school, they'll take all those kids out of that school and send them to the one that they think has better test scores. It's not a matter of the education system at San Juan School District, it's a matter of being involved parents. My mom was on the Grant Union School Board for four years and the biggest issue was parenting. There weren't, there weren't parents involved with the schools and with their children to better the program. Instead of leaving San Juan School District behind and trying to start a new charter program or something like that, which I have an open mind for endeavors like that, but we can't just look at the school district and go, hey, we've tried to work with them, they haven't worked with us, we're just gonna go out and do our own thing and leave them behind. We need to have the community get involved and we need to have the city try to push harder with the school district and maybe build some better relationships, have a cup of coffee with the school board members and talk to them about, hey, it's affecting both of us. Enrollment in the school district is down and I also think that is an aging community here in Citrus Heights. And we have to make sure the aging community here feels comfortable with new people coming in. And in order to do that, a lot of aging seniors haven't moved because the property taxes. And I think if you will allow senior citizens to move into a smaller location and allowing them to bring their property tax with them, will open up some of the housing market to younger families who will put their kids into the school district. Thank you.
Al?
Parents, parents, parents. That's the core need that we have to have in Citrus Heights if we're going to see change in the school districts. I have talked to several very influential folks in the education area around Sacramento and they will say the same thing every time. Unless you can convince the superintendent of the San Juan School District that you have a viable program and that you have a need that can be met with change, it's not going to happen. And it takes parents to do that. It's not the city council, it's not individual members of the council, it's the parents working with us to make that happen. There's a lot of things we can do, there's a lot of options and opportunities. The open borders for our campuses is one of the things that happened. They offer programs at the other campuses that they do not offer here because the parents on that end of the district want those programs. And it allows our best students to go that direction, or students who parent, who's parent have the time, the ability, and the means to transport them to those campuses. So those are difficult things for us to deal with and a lot of it is out of our control, but it's very definitely something we can work with. We have to see change, we have to see improvement. And I've heard the story, well, it's not the teachers, or it's not this, or it's not that. I taught college classes where high school students came into class and they could not read a ruler. They couldn't do fractions and associate fractions on a ruler with fractions in arithmetic, where they didn't know the basic use of certain words, like here and there and the various forms of those words. And they came out of high schools with a diploma. So at some point in time, we have to come to the realization that this is an entire package that we have to address, not just bits and pieces. My goal is to address that entire package and start working with the school district to get them to realize where the need is. Thank you.
Portia?
As a parent, I feel this issue deeply. In fact, when I ran in 2016, it was one of my core issues because Citrus Heights schools are 71% Title I. That means that we have ESL students, low-income students, and we're not able to meet the need of these students. I'm, I'm one of those parents that has to send their child just right outside the border to a school in Orangeville because I want my son to be able to walk out of second grade able to read a grade level. It's about building partnerships and I, and I'm, I'm all for that. I'm all for trying to build a bridge where, where you can build one. But if it's not possible, we must be willing to explore all opportunities and options, whether that's going the route as our council members say is of forming a charter school or putting, or forming our own school district. I don't know, but I know that what we're doing now is not working. So we should try, I think, give the old college try and continue to once again try to build strong relationships. And maybe once elected as a parent voice on this council, we might be able to get some traction, some movement. But if not, then we have to consider other alternatives because people are not going to move their children into this district and, and put them into these schools. We have a Silver Middle School, beautiful school. I went to the grand opening, I looked around at it, I talked to school board members, they showed me around. It's a gem in our district. However, it's 200% over enrollment and that's not with students from Citrus Heights. It's from students coming from other areas of the San Juan District. So it's a disservice to the kids that are right here in our own community who can benefit from science, engineering, technology, and math. I'm an engineer. We know these are core things that people need to know. You've got, like, like Al said, you have to be good at math if you want to be able to do anything, if you want to make change at the drive-through, you have to be able to do math. And it's critical that we, we do whatever we can to provide a quality education for our kids.
Thank you. Steve, you get to start this one. Citrus Heights is an established community with strong roots, but there are challenges related to aging neighborhoods. Citrus Heights neighborhood should be safe and comfortable for people living here now and attractive to new families. How can Citrus Heights improve its neighborhoods to attract new residents?
There's a number of ways. One, it starts with public safety. And I mentioned before, property crimes are down and violent crimes are down 8%. And so having safe neighborhoods, having a police department that responds. We've also instituted or considering, the council's considering now, a ordinance to, on rental housing inspection program. And what that would do, and many folks have complained about it, 93% when we surveyed our, our residents last said blight in the neighborhoods was a, was a big issue. And a lot of this comes from the rental housing. And we want to in the next three years inspect every single rental housing unit. And that also includes apartments, that's really not been the issue, it's been the houses and you can see them in the neighborhood. We have an aging housing stock and a lot of these homes that are rentals are absentee landlords from the Bay Area, they're not fixing the siding, the, the roofs and it's, it's just causing blight in our neighborhood. And a lot of folks have asked for us to correct it and I think that's one of the tools we can do. I've also mentioned paving. I, I know I was one of the fortunate neighborhoods way back in 97, 98, we had one of the worst streets in the city and it had never been repaved since it was paved 30 years prior. And just coming and resurfacing the street, just improve the entire neighborhood. So I think we need to look at ways that we can raise property values of all the surrounding homes by taking care of some of the blighted issues.
Thank you. Tristan?
Thank you. I believe my plan on that is simple. We need to reduce fees on housing, rental housing, simplify permitting with a one-stop-shop policy so builders have one point of contact at the city who bird dog all the city departments and outside agencies. Speed up the permitting process. I am examining financial incentives such as community banking and financing as a possible way to encourage private development of affordable housing. I do not and I will not support any efforts for the city to become a housing provider, builder, or landlord. But I think it's really important what Steve said when he said that the city recently voted on the new initiative that pays for code enforcement. I believe that was actually wrong. I, I don't agree with the city on that, they voted on that four to one. And what that does is 25% of the code enforcement problems in the city come from rental properties, but now they're turning to basically taxing with a registration fee 100% of the landlords and property owners of those rentals to pay for 100% of the code enforcement increase of those five additional employees. The city said that the three new code enforcement officers and two new analytical analysts will be paid for by the registration fees and it won't be any cost out of the general fund. Those are employees who have pension plans and raises and benefit increases every year. So after one year, that fee will no longer cover those services and that's going to come out of the general fund. And we need to make sure we do have code enforcement to fix the issues though, but a financially sustainable way. Thank you.
Thank you. Al?
I think that the problem that we're looking at in these established neighborhoods, and we have older families, older residents that have a tax base that they don't want to give up. We don't have a way for them to move that tax base as of yet. There's going to be a proposition on the ballot coming up that talks about can a, an property owner, senior citizen property owner, move out of a larger home into a smaller home of equal or near value and take their property tax exemption with them? We have a situation in all of our communities where your elderly population are being priced out of their homes or their particularly rentals because they're on fixed incomes and they cannot make that difference. And yet they own a tremendous amount of the land in our city at this point in time. And we need to respect that and we need to deal with it accordingly. The inspection that people are talking about, I will tell you now, I built houses in the 1960s. I built apartment buildings in the 1960s. And the apartment buildings we have in Citrus Heights built in the late 60s are, were built for a, a lifespan of about 20 years. And they're still there and a lot of them have not been changed. We have some serious problems. One of the things we need to avoid is a subsequent liability of the city for not being able to inspect and ensure safe housing like they're doing right now in Richmond, like they're doing in Oakland and like they're doing in Berkeley. There are court cases out there pending right now that if they go the way they're looking at this point, will make the local jurisdiction liable for not doing inspections for public safety.
Thank you. Portia?
I understand, I understand where our current council is coming from when it comes to the rental inspections and I also understand where candidate Tristan is coming from also. And my concern is more so that by adding in these extra steps for these property owners that do not deal with the hassle, they'll take apartment buildings and they'll just convert them into condos and that decreases our rental housing stock. And so basically they get renovated, they get to resell them and it increases property values all around, but then we have to worry about the end effect of that, which is like, you know, people getting priced out of the area, getting priced out of their homes, rent, rental, rentals increasing in price. And these individuals are, you know, end up, end up homeless essentially. And I think the more reasonable thing to do is to encourage uses of our, our community grants, of people going out there and helping to clean up neighborhoods. We, the old Silver School, that's right across from the community Silver and Silver Road, the operating engineers come out there every year and they do development. Rotary goes out every year and they find projects that need to be done within our community. We, we can't legislate our way out of this problem. We have to be that community that we were 20 years ago that started to fix these issues as a group. And that's, that's core. But trying to, trying to legislate and make laws and create more issues for our property owners is just going to turn them away and then we, we won't have the development that we want.
Thank you. Jeanne?
We start by recognizing who we are today and what we have to live with and work with. We are a community that has aging housing stock and a small level of ability to create new housing from the ground up. So most of our improvements are going to be on redevelopment and development of our neighborhoods. One way to improve our neighborhoods to attract new residents is to continue to grow the programs we already have. We have a first-time home buyer program for people who have not been homeowners in the last three years. It's a loan, it's a loan assistance program that provides them the ability to make a down payment. It's a program that they don't, they don't have to pay back until they sell the house. In addition, we have a home repair program that's very vibrant. We need to continue to grow these programs so that people who are in substandard homes have the ability to pay for repairs that they need to elevate the quality of the home that they live in. We also need to continue to offer options in housing. We have over half of our homes are, are rental homes. And yes, rental homes are necessary, but for a community to grow and to improve, we need more homeownership. And so the kinds of programs that we're offering are a piece of the puzzle that will help make that possible. In addition, you know, we go back, okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's okay, this next question will allow you to roll into what you were going to say anyhow probably. The city just completed an awareness campaign that showcases the city's solid roots and new growth. The established community has built a strong foundation and now we have an eye on new growth. What does this new growth look like to you in Citrus Heights? And we'll start with Tristan on that.
Thank you. New growth begins with public safety. It does. Everybody looks at public safety before they move to a new community. My wife and I, that's the first thing we did was we looked at the crime rate in Citrus Heights and we were glad to see that since the inception of the police department, the crime rate has gone down. I know on, on social media and stuff, sometimes they perceive I know on social media and stuff, sometimes they perceive, the community perceives that the crime is getting worse, and in reality, it's not. I think the city and the police force do an excellent job with their problem-oriented policing, and they get out there into the community and let people know what's going on. I think they could do a better job on letting the community know exactly what they're doing though, because it's all about perception. If the community thinks there's crime, then there's crime, and that's what gets reported on the internet, and that's where people Google, and that's where people look. So I think the whole city starts with the new growth with an eye on the public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Al?
That strong foundation we have draws a lot of people here that are interested in our home. Homes, our land, and the larger lots that we have. We are standing right now at a point in time where we are going to become the next East Sacramento, where the large growth of homes east of the Watt Avenue corridor around Arden and, I believe it was Arden and Fair Oaks, took a gigantic leap, taking older homes and building new homes. They call them McMansions or some other things. I don't believe that's what we're going to see. But we are going to see a transformation of these larger lots and older homes as the parents and the grandparents pass on, as these pieces of land are sold, they're divided into smaller lots, newer homes built there. We have to guarantee we're going to have smart growth within this community if we're going to draw people here. We just cannot go haphazardly into the future throwing things together, thinking that just because it's built, they're going to come, because that's not going to happen. We need to make sure we do it right. I think the nice thing about Citrus Heights is we have done it right. We haven't done it right all the time. We may not be right every time, but this city has done it right. One of our city founders says, "Tell me what you're going to do if you're going to change. What's the city done wrong that you think you need to change in government?" And I got to tell you, those are few and far between. This city has done a lot of things right. They've done it within the right timing, and I want to make sure that we continue that direction with guidance from the folks in the community, folks on the council, and the folks that work for our city.
Thank you. Portia?
Solid roots. It looks like our current council. It looks like several members that I see out here in our community. New growth are the people I trusted in myself, people in this audience who have children, want to have children, have grandchildren that live in this area. And we have to find a way to provide the way for that new growth to flourish and thrive. And that means public safety is always key, it's always critical, but how are you going to fund it? It comes down to business development. Everything leads back to you have to have the revenue to support it. And you don't get the revenue by raising taxes. You don't get the revenue by over legislating. You get the revenue by focusing on business development and how that business can serve our community and highlight what is so special about us. It's all of us. And we need to really peg down and focus on that, on that, and not focus so much on the differences. Yeah, you know, it depends on where you look on Facebook. I see the issue from day to day in the Facebook groups go from it's business development, these restaurants are closing, this store is closing, to there's crime, or, you know, there's no place to take my kids to play. It's whatever issue you run into at the moment, and that's what the city needs to work towards addressing, the issues that we run into day to day that change by what we have to go through. You know, if I want to go to Lanzin, it doesn't exist anymore in Sears. I have to go online. If we want to go and take our kids out to the parks, and we don't feel the parks are safe, we have to go out to Roseville to the splash pad. We have to focus on our community.
Thank you. Jeannie?
New growth looks like choice in Citrus Heights. We have to have choice in our housing. We have to have choice in our educational system, and we have to have choice in the businesses that come to Citrus Heights. Our solid roots are very important to us, and they have made us what we are today. But 22 years ago, we had no solid roots, and we took a risk, and we fought hard to become a city, and we won the right to vote for a city and to finally have a choice over what our community is going to look like. I've sat on the committee for the campaign for our awareness campaign, and we did a lot of back-and-forth headwork on what do we want our slogan to be, and we really felt that solid roots and new growth told our story and tells our story going forward. Our new growth is going to be in new families. It's also going to be in doing things differently. We have been a suburban community. We have fought hard to maintain that identity, but new growth is going to mean looking at housing differently, looking at density clusters, looking at business clusters. Walkability has been brought up, that's very important, and being sensitive to the fact that our aging community is not going to be able to get out and go elsewhere to get the services that they need. So it's a combination of attracting new families, servicing our aging community, and doing that by giving them choice. Thank you.
Steve?
Yeah, I've heard a lot of good ideas tonight. I believe we continue with building complete streets and making our city walkable and safe, continuing building trails for walking and bicycling. That's been extremely popular. I think we're a tear-down city now. If we want to do something new, we need to tear something down. I think it'll bring new housing types and opportunities. I think some of our strip malls that were popular in the 60s and 70s have decayed to the point where we need to look at new opportunities there for development, whether it's mixed use or bringing housing into the, just total housing into the equation. And Jeannie, you touched on it. Homeownership brings investment and creates passion for the community, and I think that's something that we can build on, that the new growth is young families, homeownership. We've talked about arts and entertainment options. I think we're very lacking in that. We have enough restaurants, and Portia mentioned, you know, that's a tough business, and you see a few of them go out of business and a few more come into business. It's just a revolving door. Better education is part of our new growth. And I think too, there's opportunities, and I talked about the mall, bringing in some Class 1 corporate offices. We are so, and that's something we're stressing in our awareness campaign, we're central to the region. Even with bad traffic, you can get anywhere in the region in about 30 minutes unless it's really bad.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks.
All right. So now, we are on time, believe it or not. There's three more questions, so you all can start thinking about your concluding statements. I've got two quick questions. These are both 60 seconds. We're going to start with Al. What's the next big project for Citrus Heights?
To limit it to one?
That's not the question we're seeing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not seeing that.
We're on 13.
Oh, well, okay.
There you go.
Sorry about that. We'll start over. We're now going to be 30-second slate. Question number 12. Al, what's the next big project for Citrus Heights?
There's a lot of possibilities. I, lead it down to one is going to be very difficult. I will say this, the burning thing for us right now is what's going to happen with the mall, because so much of our city center is at that mall right now, and we need to get some very definite movement on what is going to happen with the property, what's going to happen with the development, and where we are going to go with it. I think that if we take the lead on that, which we are working at now, and we work strongly with the current owners or find new owners and developers to go for it, that mall will become our city center. It will become the activity location that centers our families to a location where they can dine, where they can have recreation, where they have walkability, and where they have safety and security for their kids to play. Seniors can go to enjoy time together, working together in an area that is safe for them also. So I think that probably the mall is about the next big project that I think we should be seeing down the line.
Thank you. Portia?
Mr. Fox, I absolutely agree with you. That mall is critical. It is the gem of our community. Our community was built around that mall. We became a city because of the revenue that mall generated 20 years ago. And it's critical for us now to figure out how to re-revive that. I've talked with residents, and they don't want to see the mall go away. They don't want to lose those memories of the foundation and the history and the struggles that the council at that time went through to become a city. It's important, and we really have to focus on that. There are a lot of other things that we can look at. We can look at, you know, the Auburn Boulevard area, we can look at the area around Stones and how we can redevelop that area, but I think the critical key here is going to be Sunrise Mall and how we can bring more activities, more events to that area. And it's going to be, it's going to be hard. We're going to have to really brainstorm about it and figure out how do we attract people, but it can be done.
Thank you. Jeannie?
Well, we all see the mall as our greatest challenge, and I will agree that that is our next large, big project in Citrus Heights. What I envision it to be is an employment center. Today, our second-largest source of sales tax comes from internet sales. That's going to continue to grow. That means our community is not going to have to depend on retail sales to bring in sales tax. We will always have retail sales on some level, but we are living in the internet world right now, and we're not, to go back and try to, for memory's sake, make a mall work that doesn't work anymore is an exercise in futility. Jobs creation is the number-one thing that's going to bring economic development to a community. It's going to sell houses. It's going to bolster our existing businesses, and so I think we need to look at that as a multi-use job center that's going to bring recreation, jobs, and services to our community.
Thank you. Steve?
Okay, I can't argue that the mall's not big, and we are using every tool in our toolbox to attract new investment, ownership, and reinvention and redevelopment of the mall. But right on the radar right now is Auburn Boulevard and finishing Phase 2 to the Placer County Line from Rush Park. It's been designed. We're in the middle of right-of-way acquisition, and you can see on Auburn Boulevard where our economic development funds for existing businesses have been put to work. Crepes and Burgers is a good example of where they used grant money for matching funds for facade and sign improvements. And there's a number of businesses up and down Auburn Boulevard, including the first phase, that have taken advantage of this. The challenge for that is the matching funds from us locally. I think we'll be able to get the state and federal funds for complete streets for that, but that's a major focus. I anticipate construction to begin in 2020, and you have to look out that long term to what's happening, and these things take time.
Thank you. Tristan?
Thank you. I think I have to agree with the majority of the members up here that it is Sunrise Mall. The last five years that I've sat as a board member for the Neighborhood Association, we've had the owners, the multiple owners of Sunrise Mall come and speak with our community, and they always have ideas and they always have plans, but nothing ever gets done. And I honestly don't know how we can work with Sunrise Mall owners to develop that property. I have seen in other areas where they've taken outdated properties like that, and they've split up the parcels. They've built some areas like they have in Roseville, the fountains on those properties. And also, you can even put universities or mixed-use housing inside of those big, giant anchor stores like Sears was. In the end, it's going to come down to the community, the community engaging with Sunrise Mall and basically telling them, "We want you to do something," and that's it. It's all about the community involvement for that. Thank you.
Very good. All right, now the next question. We'll start with Portia. Look out 10 years. How do you see Citrus Heights, and what do we need to do to make your vision a reality?
60 seconds. Okay, we'll be quick. Citrus Heights will be a beacon of fiscal responsibility. We'll be, we'll have the school systems in place that are necessary to support our students and our families, and we'll have the workforce and the services necessary for us to continue to thrive and grow. And how we do that, we've talked about multiple ways for the past hour and a half about how that happens. We have to figure out whether we're going to have our own school system, we're going to charter schools, we have to figure out business development, we have to repave our streets, we have to figure out the best way to rebuild our reserves so that we have that support going forward in the future. Workforce development's going to be key, education is key, and business development's going to be key. And that's, it's a place where, you know, my kids will leave, and when they come back after they go to college, you know, they'll come home and they'll, my house will be paid off, and they'll take care of me in my old age, hopefully. It's a place where our kids come back to live and remember everything that we've done to get to this point.
Thank you. Jeannie?
In 10 years, I see Citrus Heights as a vibrant community that has multifaceted population, has multifaceted housing, has a lot of small employers and some medium employers, and maybe a large employer or two, as we redevelop the land that we already have, that we think outside the box, as we did when we approved the medical center, as we did when we became a city to begin with. And not be, and a city that is populated with people that take on challenges that may look too big to tackle when we first look at them, but knowing the tenacity and the voracious appetite we have to improve the quality of life in Citrus Heights, that we become an even more tightly organized, volunteer-driven, filled with pride community because we did it ourselves.
Thank you. Steve?
How do I see Citrus Heights? Sorry. How do I see Citrus Heights in 10 years? I don't know if I can even imagine driverless vehicles humming around our streets. I just, I don't know, and robots and all that stuff, but no, realistically, I think with our property taxes, we will see advances in paving our roads. That's really important to improving our community. Like Jeannie, thriving commercial centers and job centers, better schools. We've made some inroads with the school district, and we didn't have to form our own school district. Homeownership is now higher than rentals. We have some professional jobs here, and maybe, just maybe, the Citrus Heights Hotel with a little entertainment center where folks can go. And I'm thinking right next to Stones Casino, that would just work perfectly. And what do we need to make the vision a reality is the commitment of folks, young and old, like we have up here, working towards the same goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Tristan?
Thank you. The reason my wife and I moved to Citrus Heights, we could have lived in all kinds of different places, and we chose Citrus Heights because we see it as a community that is going to get better. And we thought it would be great to move to a town that is still, was still in its infancy, and we could be a part of that growth and be a part of that community from the beginning. And honestly, I have to say, Citrus Heights leaders have done a really good job helping to start this city off on the right foot. You know, in the 21 years, it has been a pleasure living close by and living in the city, seeing what's happened here. They deserve our thanks, but we can't get stuck in the past. I'm running to bring the new energy and the blue-collar work ethic to city council. We need to ensure that there's a strategy to tackle the homeless problem, because if that doesn't get any better, this city won't be better in 10 years. We need to ensure our police have the resources and training. We need to refocus the budget. Thank you.
You'll have two minutes pretty soon for your concluding statements, so. Al?
When you all go home tonight, look in the mirror and understand that we are a city that has a regional presence that can impact all of North Sacramento, from Folsom all the way to North Highlands. We can be the center of that regional development simply by doing the smart planning and the development within our city that we need. We can have a vibrant, active, and welcoming community, serving a diverse population, serving them well with schools, entertainment, retail, and restaurant facilities. We can have a strong public safety, which we have now. We just need to continue to build with it as we grow. I think the leadership in public safety has been tremendous. We have had two excellent leaders, and I think that their vision follows along very well with the growth patterns that we're talking about. We need vibrant neighborhoods. We need those neighborhoods associations to be strong, and everybody in the neighborhoods to get active so that we grow as a city.
Very good. Thank you, Al. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. This is the time when each of the candidates, starting with Jeannie, will have two minutes to make a concluding statement. Jeannie?
Thank you. Well, I want to begin by thanking the Chamber of Commerce for putting this forum together this evening. They've been a force in our community long before we incorporated and became a city. I want to just thank you for that. The reason I'm running for another term after having served four terms is because I want to be a part of the solution to what happens when we get our tax dollars back. Back in 1996, when we became a city, we had to forfeit our property tax for 25 years. We have been successful without property tax revenue. And so as we look forward to getting that money back, there's so many things that we can do with it. We've heard so many things tonight. We've heard so many things tonight. I really believe it is a balance between continuing to develop our infrastructure, moving our city forward, and rebuilding our reserves. In addition, we were viewed as kind of a ragtag community back in the '90s and the '80s, and people scoffed at us when we wanted to become a city. But we have an energy in Citrus Heights that translates into can-do. And we've talked a little bit about education tonight, and having worked over time, it's become a source of frustration. Even in our early days, some of our school teachers asked us to form our own school district, but we had a city to build. Now is the time to take charge of what's going to happen to our educational system in the future. We want to continue to partner with San Juan Unified to the extent that they're willing to work with us. But I'm not satisfied that our kids are open and rolling into schools outside of our school boundaries. I'm not satisfied that we are losing talent to other communities. We need to take the bull by the horns. We need to let the school district and others know that we have the tenacity and the drive to bring high-level education to Citrus Heights, and that's one of the things I will focus on once I'm re-elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Yes. First of all, thank you, Charlie Miller, for running the clock, Ray Reilly for being our moderator, and thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. This is so important and keeping informed, and it's just amazing with the new technology that we're out there on YouTube and Facebook, so welcome to those viewing live. And thank you to the candidates for being here. This is really important, and I got to hand it to both Portia and Tristan for stepping outside their comfort zone and throwing their hats in the ring. This is very important, and you learn things with these forums, and I've learned some things from everybody up here on the dais. I'm running because truly I've built, I think, invaluable relationships throughout the city and the region that will help the city get things done. You know me, I have an established track record, and challenges are facing us for the next four years, and I want to see, like Jeannie, I want to see it through. And I think now more than ever, experience matters. We've talked about spurring on a new mall ownership group, completing Auburn Boulevard, dealing with our homeless issues, and finding added funding to pave our streets. Those are very important, and so I respectfully ask for your vote on November 6th or early, because I guess we have early voting now that starts October 10th. So again, I'd appreciate your vote. Steve Sparky Miller, and I won't get into where the Sparky nickname came from, but a lot of folks in the community knew me as Coach Sparky, and they didn't know my real name, so I have to put that on the ballot, and if you want, sometime I'll explain where I got the nickname. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Tristan?
Thank you. I want to thank the public and the Chamber of Commerce for hosting and showing up to this candidate's forum. This is the first debate of my life, except with my wife or my, you know, people like that, so bear with me. My name is Tristan Shaw, and I'm running for city council. I want to bring a new, blue-collar work ethic and new energy to the city. It is hard to get to know any candidate in 30-second soundbites. So if you want to learn more, please go to trastanshaul.com. My phone number and email are there, and you can ask me any question or share your own ideas. I will always be accessible to the entire community. As your council member, I will ensure public safety remains the top priority, tackle the growing homeless problem, focus the budget on sound economic planning, and work to fix our roads. And I will work with the community to develop a new generation of leaders. There is no magic formula for accomplishing these goals. It will take hard work and discipline, and I am no stranger to either. My name is Tristan Shaw, and I hope to get a chance to earn your support and look forward to working together to keep Citrus Heights working. Thank you.
Al?
Once again, my name is Al Fox, and I'm running for city council because I believe the time is right for the next four years to be placed before us, the foundation to be built, and for us to start making a move that's going to be what our city will become in the future. First of all, I want to thank the chamber for sponsoring this evening. I want to also thank them for allowing me to have the opportunity this last year, Cindreen, for a meeting with a whole lot of the new business owners coming into Citrus Heights, developing their new businesses here and growing. I've had a wonderful experience talking and meeting with them about what drew them to Citrus Heights, what they want to see happen in the future, and what their dreams are for success. I want to make sure that the senior community here knows, you are here because our city has a tremendous number of housing elements specifically designed for seniors. And if there's any of you here that think the seniors lay around and do nothing, and that they're a dying breed, forget it. We've got a vibrant community. They're active, and they pay attention to what's going on, and they are a voting powerhouse in the northern part of Sacramento County that no one should overlook. And they are our strength if we work with them and we help them develop. And guess what their greatest concern is? Schools and the future of our city. Serving on the Planning Commission, I was able to be chair during some of the biggest projects that we have done so far, creeks and trails, the medical office building, and city hall. I chaired meetings during all or part of those, conducting those hearings, and I learned a tremendous amount about our city, about our community, and about the people who live here, and I thank all of you for that. When your ballots come out, my name is Al Fox. I am running for city council, and I truly would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Portia?
Thank you, everyone, community members, council candidates, for coming out tonight. It means a lot. I've got to hear a lot of great ideas, and I'm running for council because I want to bring a community voice back to this council. I've been watching, I went through the chamber leadership, Citrus Heights, a little over a year ago. I learned about what this city is built upon. I know that we have a great potential. We're not talking about pie in the sky ideals here. We're all on the same page. We're talking about we need economic development, we need, you know, strong businesses, we need quality of life and public safety. And this is not just for the youth, this is not just for my family, it's for every single resident in the city. And it's critical that we all understand that we're all living here, and we all have a voice, and we need to take that voice and put it and make it as one, to get the best out of what we have to offer. We need to make sure that all the programs like Heart and Navigator and the public programs that are offered by the city are utilized to their fullest to help encourage new residents to move into our community and to keep them here. We need to make sure that we use, the chamber has a school board, I'm sorry, the education council that they go to, San Juan and Mesa Verde, and they alternate half the year. And we have active members from this, from the chamber, from our community, from the council, who attend these meetings and do mock interviews, and we're really trying to implement ourselves in every aspect of San Juan Unified School District. It's critical. We all know the issues that we're facing. I just think that we need to put a different lens on it. And I'm not talking about a rose-colored lens, I'm not talking about a lens that's talking about spending more money. I'm talking about new ideas, fresh ideas, of fatality, vibrancy, that every one of us are craving, that we desire. And it's important that we figure out a way to make it happen, because we're at a critical turn, that when we get our property taxes, the time to figure that out is not in 2022. The time to figure that out is November 6th of this year, and I respectfully ask for your vote. Portia Middleton for city council.
Thank you all very much. Just appreciate your efforts. So we're done, and we're about a minute early. Tomorrow night, if you liked what you saw this evening, tomorrow night we will have the San Juan Board of Education Forum. We have candidates from San Juan Board of Education here, and you're all welcome to come back again. Thank you. Have a great evening.